It is five thirty. Call this regular session of the Red Oak City Council to order this Monday, April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, five thirty here at the Red Oak Fire Station at nineteen oh four North Broadway. Just a reminder, this meeting is open to the public and is being recorded. It's available on our YouTube channel. Invitation by Pastor Kevin Berry of River Island Life Church. Please stand.
Dear my father, first of all, we thank you so very much for a beautiful day and the opportunity to be here together. Where we ask and we invite you to be felt here that your presence and that your wisdom and that your peace would be felt here. Please bless this community and help it to help it to grow and while it is here to honor you, to honor you in the decisions that are made and the actions that are taken and just in the community at large. Lord, as we, as the city council does the, the business of, of Red Oak, that you would strengthen these leaders, that you would give them wisdom beyond their experience, that you would help them to direct this community and that you would help us as citizens to, to communicate effectively and to act civilly amongst one another. Lord, we love you and we just ask that you will be here tonight. Lord, we love you and we thank you. Amen.
Amen. Brian, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Ashley?
Bradley.
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Right off?
Here.
Isaac?
Here.
April?
Here.
Number five, approval of the agenda. And this would be the amended agenda.
Move to the amended agenda. One second.
Fredo and Bills.
Roll call.
Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
April?
Yep.
Bradley?
Yes.
Number six, we do have a couple of proclamations. Um, one is for the proclamation of the National Day of Prayer. We do this every year. Uh, this year it will be Thursday, May first. Um, should I read the proclamation? We've had in the past, some people have suggested, some said, no, I'm gonna read them. Whereas the Constitution, the United States recognizes the importance of faith in the lives of individuals and communities and acknowledges the freedom to participate or to practice religion. And whereas the National Day of Prayer has been observed annually on the first Thursday of May since nineteen fifty-two, inviting people of all faiths to come together in prayer for our nation, its leaders and its people. And whereas in two thousand and twenty-five, we join with citizens across the country to observe this day of prayer, reflecting on the significance of faith in our lives, the strength of our community and the power of collective prayer for the betterment of all. And whereas the city of Red Oak, Iowa, values the diverse traditions and beliefs of all citizens and encourages unity, peace and hope through prayer. And whereas on this day, we call upon the citizens of Red Oak to join in a spirit of prayer, asking for guidance, wisdom and strength for our local, state and national leaders, as well as for the safety and well-being of our people in our community and the world. Now therefore, I, Shawna Silvius, Mayor of the city of Red Oak, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May first, two thousand and twenty-five as the National Day of Prayer in Red Oak, and I encourage all citizens to observe this day in prayer, reflection and unity. And witness whereof I hear, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Red Oak to be affixed the seventh day of April, two thousand and twenty-five. Have you found the seal by chance?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
We do have one. Okie dokie. And then this other one is, uh, the Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month is April. This is for the two thousand and twenty-five proclamation. We've done this every year, um, since I've been mayor anyway. Whereas children are our state's most vulnerable members, as well as our state's most valuable resources, hoping to shape the future of Red Oak and Iowa. And whereas positive childhood experiences, like loving caregivers and safe, stable and nurturing relationships, can help mitigate trauma and the negative impacts of adverse childhood experiences, ACEs, to promote the social, emotional and developmental well-being of children. And whereas childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations of their family. And whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every community and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas children who live in families with access to concrete, economic and social supports are less likely to experience abuse and neglect. And whereas nurture, positive childhoods and preventing child maltreatment is possible because of the partnerships created between families, prevention advocates, advocates, child welfare professionals, education, health, community and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies and local, state and national governments. And whereas we acknowledge that in order to solve the public health issue of abuse and neglect, we must work together to change hearts and mindsets through storytelling and sharing, center the needs of families, break down biases and barriers and inspire action from expected and unexpected partners. And whereas we are committed to advancing equitable, responsive and effective systems that ensure all children and families are healthy and thriving. And whereas we recognize the need to prioritize kids and invest in more prevention initiatives like home visiting and family strengthening policies, economic supports and community-based child abuse prevention programs at the national, state and local levels. Now therefore, I, Shawna Silvius, Mayor of the city of Red Oak, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Red Oak, Montgomery County, Iowa, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by building a narrative of hope for children and families through collaboration and the creation of an ecosystem of primary prevention that does not currently exist in the country. I'm assigned one that has that one edit. If you would do that for me? Alrighty. Um, number seven, public comics. Just a reminder, this is a three-minute limit and you must sign in from, uh, here on the, the sheet. Um, and I know John Gross sent a request into, it is in the packet regarding the garbage cleanup, so I'd have you go first, John.
Actually have some packets for the council members. There is some information about what I've tried to help with the city wipe cleanups. Uh, trying to get extra help, see if we can get this done as much as possible, as possible. So it does help the city and makes a difference. Um, there is some information in there when you read it, when you get a chance. And, uh, I have a list of, we can get rid of tires. That's the only thing that would actually cost us, but it is a local company and they will be paying on the water bill to have this done. So I think that's a fair trade to pay them for the tires to be disposed of properly. There will be batteries, it could be, every battery can be disposed of properly. Appliances with freon will be disposed of properly. Um, cars can be hauled away by a person that's legal or local that is legal to do it and take care of all that. So there really shouldn't be any reason, we can't get rid of everything that we need to as far as this junk that's laying around to help people clear out. The last thing will be volunteers. I will try to get a bunch of volunteers with pickups and trailers. If people can't move it, we will. And take it to the location where we're dumping, getting rid of stuff. So I just wanted to bring that to the council and you can choose and decide. If you'd like me to help, no problem. If you don't, I won't, I'll stay at home that day because I don't have to do it. I don't have anything to get rid of, but I'm willing to help the city clean up messes, to help clean up and get rid of junk that's been here for years. So, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Linda King? Is it Linda King? I have never used it. The whole time I've been alive, I've never used it. And I'm just curious why we all have to pay four dollars if we don't use it. I mean, it's just the idea of it. I mean, it's not a lot of money, but it's just the idea of it, that if you don't use it, why would you have to pay for it?
I was gonna say, so public comments are not a back and forth conversation between us. It's an opportunity for you to share your thoughts and considerations with the council. Um, but we don't take action, we don't discuss further, so it's more your time to share with us your thoughts. So that's why we're not responding. Sorry. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Ronald King?
I'm there because of the city wipe cleanup. I am not against the city wipe cleanup. My, my heart problem with the city wipe cleanup is I don't believe it should be paid for on, on the water bills. And here is my reason for. There are a lot of extra income people who live in this town, a lot of low-income people who live in this town. And these people, due to all the cost that went up everywhere, I mean everywhere, and considerably higher. I mean, inflation is crazy. And these people do not have the money to make it through the month. At the end of the month, they were completely, if they even make it through the month, most of them don't. And I talked to a lot of those. Social Security, the little ways they got on Social Security, didn't even come close to paying for what raises them up. These people have to make a choice. What are they gonna skip? You know, maybe, maybe they have to skip the doctor's appointment because they can't afford to pay the deductibles or the copay, so they skip that appointment. It's hard on their health. They may, they can't decide, maybe, uh, maybe they skip prescriptions. They don't take prescriptions the way they should because they don't have the money to pay the deductibles or. Then, at the end of all this, when they go through there, maybe they have to sit in the cold on the winter nights because they turned their front thermostat down because they can't pay for the gas and water bills. I know they told me to help, but they still gotta turn, turn their thermostat down. But you know, that, uh, four dollars, that fifty dollars, maybe they could buy a warm blanket so they could sit there.
Thirty seconds?
Thirty seconds, wait. Anyway, before you make this decision on this, I hope you give these poor people that can't afford this stuff a thought and make your payments through taxes, property taxes, state taxes, state income taxes, city, sales tax, or through people that are willing.
And that's. Thank you. I want that. Thank you. Number eight, the consent agenda includes the approval of the minutes of the city, city of Red Oak, a three seventeen twenty-five council meeting, as well as the public hearing and the special council meeting on three thirty-one twenty-five. The receipt of minutes from the Airport Commission on March twenty-first of twenty-five, as well as Tourism and Recreation Committee minutes from March twenty-third of twenty-five. Liquor licenses, we have none this time, and the police event request to close Fourth Street um, on April nineteenth, the morning of, for the Easter breakfast. It's between Coolba and Reed Street on Fourth, so that people can have pancakes with the Easter bunny. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve. Bradley?
One second.
Right off? Roll call.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Number nine is April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, city claims. You have additional claims at the bills.
And then I would like before a motion, if that's okay, or after a motion during, to talk about these reports, since they're off the new system. If you like them one way or another, I put that in the memo. In the memo that if you look, um, if you're looking at the amended packet, if you look on page eighteen, that's gonna divide the expenses by like spending area, and it gives a little bit less detail.
I'm looking through.
Lisa, finish.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done. I thought you were done explaining.
No, I'm saying there's two different reports.
I get it.
Very good. So the first, the first set is alphabetized, or is by departments. And the second set is alphabetized by vendor.
So I need an opinion.
I will, I like by departments, but.
On the opposite, I like by the vendor.
So as I'm right, as I'm signing checks, I like by the vendor.
Yeah, I like it by department.
I like department as well.
So when I was in, we had the same software when I was in Illinois and we actually just put both in there. Because the reason that people that liked it by department, like it sort of helps you see like, what are we spending on the police department? But then the reason that people liked it the other way was if they'd say, how much are we spending at Hardware Hank? How much are we spending for a phone bill? And so one kind of helps you see what we're spending at one vendor and one helps you see on the department. But if you do the department one, then you have to go find if four departments went to Hardware Hank, then you have to add up four numbers. And so we used to just put both in there, which is, obviously we're not doing paper copies anymore, so it's really just a few extra pages. So if people like them both ways, we can certainly just, it's very easy. You'd literally just pick run by vendor and run by this and it's just gonna be two reports.
Pushing the switch, right?
Be quiet in the chambers.
Thank you.
Good. They have both reports digitally so we can reuse them both, so that's fine. I mean, I like a whole.
Doesn't cause you and I, my friend, because anybody, hard.
It's a lot. It's super easy. Karen doesn't have a problem. We just kinda said, let's give you both and then see what happens.
Works for me.
So we'll do both for now.
I'll, I'll move to approve with the additional claims.
Okay. One second. Bills and Bradley?
And by the way, I really, I really like this format.
I am much cleaner.
I usually prefer much easier reading.
How long does it take to transcribe everything?
Oh, we're only, we're only a little baby step. We're doing cash receipting and Donna and I were running around in the office because I was entering lots of payments myself and we balanced four days in a row. Like the cash matched the catch, cash and the checks matched the cash.
I don't know if that's ever happened, has it?
Well, it's, I mean, it happens at the end of the day and you're entering things completely different.
In a totally new system.
Yeah. So, you know, I was on the phone a few times, but, um, you know, and remember I've said that in the old ways, we kept five thousand pieces of paper and so we just cut the cord and stopped having pieces of paper for everything. And then, let's just try this because this is what other people do and we.
I really like this format. Much cleaner and.
There's a lot, there's a lot of reports that'll be like, once we get everything settled, like it'll be a lot nicer to build around.
We'll be able to compare yearly budgets and even quarterly budget power during.
Well, the utility bills, yeah, were, we did cash receipting. Utility bills are in the new system. The portal went live today, but I'm not advertising it until Wednesday because they're switching the portal on Wednesday, so it's just less people, but it is on the website. And then payable, so payroll will be last in the general ledger. Super great. Way easier. Fantastic.
Alright, so I've got Bills and Bradley. Roll call.
Isaac?
No, because I have not seen a financial report. I don't know how much money we've got. That's your monthly requirement, that financial report.
April?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes. Yes.
Number ten is ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash zero two, the solid waste chapter. This is our third and final reading. This, this includes a citywide cleanup fee for four dollars. Uh, the number of days to accumulate trash went from thirty to fourteen and the garbage collector permit process and fee.
This would go into effect, obviously we'll publish it. Uh, with the switch over of billing, I would not, I'm not sure that it'll go into effect right away on May first or if we do June first for the utility bills. It'll just depend on setup.
Nothing's changed on this since we've voted on it twice before.
No.
This is the third reading.
I have been on the fence about the fee though. What do you mean? It seems high, but I mean, I understand, or that may have been derived from why. Which sphere are you talking? The, the permit fee, the seven hundred dollars.
For the, for the haulers, seven hundred.
Oh, seven hundred. Yeah.
So.
Like I understand there needs to be a balance there. Like I don't, like I get that there's a reason behind it. I just kinda felt like it was a little on the hindsight.
My suggestion would be that we charge a permit fee per truck that comes into the city because there might be some haulers that have three trucks, some might have one. I think it's more feasible to charge them per truck than it is the one annual permit fee.
I hadn't thought of that, but that's not a bad idea, Sharon. I like it that way. That helps those out that are smaller now and as they grow, then they pay more, the more they use.
I think anywhere from, I think to start, we need to make it more reasonable, depending how many trucks we have on the streets. One fifty to two fifty, I don't think it's too much to ask because of the wear and tear on our streets. And I know other cities are increasing their permit fees. And some, I realize, don't do that much, but we have a lot. It's, I mean, our city is, it's costing a lot for our streets and upkeep, so.
No amount of money we collect is gonna, is gonna pay for the wear and tear on the streets. That's the cost of doing business as a city.
But I think it's, I think it's better for the small haulers if they have one truck that charges a smaller amount. So.
At the end, it's kind of a pay, pay to play. Pay to play in another sense. You're saying that it's.
You know, I would suggest two hundred per truck.
Can I say something? I know I'm not supposed to. Well, some of them are going on the city streets and some of them are going on the highways.
Alright, so what do you guys wanna do here?
I would make the motion to approve a two hundred dollar per truck permit fee.
So let's do a suggestion that we have before we actually vote on the third reading. Why don't you vote for the fee as, uh, what you're gonna put in the code when you do the final reading? Otherwise, are you voting on the whole code with the new fee or do you wanna vote on the?
I mean, if we were gonna change the fee, I would think that the, you, can you approve the third reading with the amendment of the fee to read as this? We can do that, correct?
I would approve the third reading of the ordinance two thousand and twenty-five oh two, solid waste chapter for, by the reading to, um, approve except for the garbage collector permit process and fee to be two hundred dollars per the truck.
For today's charter. And that's any truck traveling in the city to pick up waste.
So I'll, I'll second it so I can talk about it. So are we gonna issue like stickers for that then?
I think, I think we'd have to have in the permit, you would have to tell us what vehicles. It does make it more complicated.
Now, we cannot speak. Please stop speaking or I will have you removed. Sharon and Brian?
So, I, I, yeah, and I, but I still, I'd like to know kinda how we're gonna do that.
I think the details need to be worked out on how we go about it, but I guess that just the overall uh, approval of a fee is where we are at now.
So if I'm answering from an administrative perspective, you would have an application that I have to make if we get to that point. So it's gonna say, what's your company, what's your information, how do people get ahold of you? Because obviously we wanna advertise that these are, are haulers. And so there would be all of that. If you do the vehicle thing, then I would have to, I think you would have to say, and you probably would either way, say like, please describe the types of vehicles that you have, which ones? So I have three rear loaders, I have a side loader, I have a dumpster, whatever, if they're all, you know, it could be front loaders, whatever. That you would describe that. And then I guess if you're doing per vehicle, you'd probably ask for like a plate number or something. And then I would think that if you have an old vehicle and then you replace it with a new vehicle, you're not paying again. It's just if you stay collectively with three.
So does that mean we're gonna, are we gonna charge every hauler for not only the residential trash trucks? Are we gonna charge them for the roll-off trucks and, and all that kinda stuff as well or, I mean, how's that gonna work? Cause you know, they've got.
If you're, if you're doing business here, you, it doesn't matter if you strictly do commercial. If the only, if a hauler came in and only did commercial, they still have to be licensed.
No, I get that. I guess what, I guess what I'm getting at is, I mean, I, I appreciate Sharon's observation and the suggestion, but I don't know if it'll be cheaper.
It shouldn't come from all trash haulers, whether it be, whether. So let's do a suggestion that we have before we actually vote on the third reading. Why don't you vote for the fee as a, what you're gonna put in the code when you do the final reading? Otherwise, are you voting on the whole code with the new fee? Or do you want to vote on that?
I mean, if we were gonna change the fee, I would think that the, you, can you approve the third reading with the amendment of the fee to read as this? We can do that, correct?
I would approve the third reading of the ordinance twenty twenty-five oh two solid waste chapter for final, the reading to, um, approve except for the garbage collector permit process and fee to be two hundred dollars per the truck. For today's show.
And that's any truck traveling in the city to pick up this.
So I'll talk, I'll second it so I can talk about it.
Okay.
So are we gonna issue like stickers for that then?
I think, I think we'd have to have in the permit, you would have to tell us what vehicles. It does make it more complicated.
Now, we cannot speak. Please stop speaking or I will have you removed. Sharon and Brian.
So I, I, yeah, and I, but I still, I'd like to know kind of how we're gonna do that.
I think the details need to be worked out on how we go about it, but I guess that just the overall uh, approval of a fee is where we are at now.
So if I'm answering from an administrative perspective, you would have an application that I have to make if we get to that point. So it's gonna say, what's your company, what's your information? How do people get ahold of you? Because obviously we want to advertise that these are our haulers. And so there would be all of that. If you do the vehicle thing, then I would have to, I think you would have to say, and you probably would either way, say like, please describe the types of vehicles that you have, which ones? So I have three rear loaders, I have a side loader, I have a dumpster, whatever. They're all, you know, it could be front loaders, whatever, that you would describe that. And then I guess if you're doing per vehicle, you'd probably ask for like a plate number or something. And then I would think that if you have an old vehicle and then you replace it with a new vehicle, you're not paying again. It's just if you stay collectively with three.
So does that mean we're gonna, are we gonna charge every hauler for not only the residential trash trucks, are we gonna charge them for the roll off trucks and, and all that kind of stuff as well? Or, I mean, how's that gonna work? Cause you know, then they've got.
If you're, if you're doing business here, you, it doesn't matter if you strictly do commercial. If the only, if a hauler came in and only did commercial, they still have to be licensed.
No, I get that, I guess what, I guess what I'm getting at is, I mean, I, I appreciate Sharon's observation and the suggestion, but I don't know if it'll be cheaper.
It shouldn't come with all trash haulers, whether it be, whether it be, um, I know, the, uh, every.
Okay, so once again, we're worried about charging them too much, but if we charge them per truck, we might be charging them more.
This is an annual fee.
Right, but I think the point is if you get to four trucks, now you're paying more than you were worried about charging too much.
Exactly.
I don't know if people have.
You, you do a base rate of seven hundred, that, that encompasses all their trucks. If you do per truck by looking at roll offs, trash collection, how many trucks they have, you have, uh, five trucks, you're paying a thousand dollars.
I would rather see it just lower the fee.
Small haulers to have to pay something.
I was, for some reason, just thinking in my mind, just the residential, but.
But the collector's license is any person engaging, visiting, collecting, it does not say residential garbage.
Yeah, I'm, and you know, cause, you know, there's industrial, commercial.
Yeah.
My motion was to include all trash.
So we do have a right to talk to the audience if the council has information that they would get. So would it be a fair question to ask Lynette, how many trucks if you did it that way? So that you at least understand, is she a two, three or four?
How many trucks, Lynette?
Thank you. I have one residential truck that is on, is out daily. I have one commercial truck that's out daily, which is on the highways. It's not in the residential neighborhoods. And I have roll off trucks that are not in the residential neighborhoods.
Right.
So only one truck do I have that is in the residential.
Is it in the, within the city limit, all of them?
Yes.
How many roll offs, so what's your trucks?
On the outskirts with the roll offs, but.
How many trucks total?
Do I have total?
Yeah, because this doesn't say you're getting, giving trucks for residential if they do it this way. There's, so how many trucks?
I have a, I have a residential truck, I have a backup truck, I have a commercial truck and I have two roll off trucks.
So five.
So once again, if we're concerned about seven fifty being too much, I just assume just drop the price a little bit for the permit fees and just, and call good. And I, like I said, I appreciate the idea, but I don't think.
Yeah, I didn't disagree where you're going with that. I was just thinking in my mind more of just the residential trucks versus, versus we're talking about any haulers bringing trucks into there.
So I think any hauler would have.
No, no, I don't mean that. I'm, I wasn't thinking about like the roll off trucks or things that, I was just thinking.
When you were thinking about the idea of.
Right, it was just those that are picking up the residential garbage is what my initial thought was about that saying per truck. But to me, correct, it wouldn't make much sense to do per truck if we are gonna charge for every truck in like, say, eight.
The only difference.
How many, how many customers do you have for roll off?
How many customers do I have for roll off? I have, I have them that set out, just, well, actually, when I come and that comes down to it, I'm sorry. Yes, I do set some in, in the residential neighborhood, in the roll off tracks.
Okay.
Yeah, but I.
I know there's several in the residential neighborhood, yeah.
So again, whatever you decide tonight, you can always change in a year if it seems like, you know.
But once again, the whole idea of changing it was to make it better for the haulers. And if we change it per truck, we're gonna make it worse for them.
Well, some, but to, to, like the, the benefit to it is if you have uh, poor boys that comes here for a hundred houses and they come with one truck, they're gonna spend this much and Lynette, who is our biggest hauler.
And then once again, Lynette, our biggest hauler is our only local hauler.
I'd rather be, I'd rather pay the, I think the seven hundred is too much, but I'd rather pay the seven hundred than I would first try.
I, I would like to keep it at seven hundred here's why, because we do have some guys that come from out of town with pickups to pick up people's trash. And I would, I wanted to keep them out because, because I would rather have our local people stay local here and they can pick up those customers. I stay at seven hundred dollars and that's where I'm at.
I saw one of those guys on Sunday.
Exactly. And, and, and their stuff is not in contained, stuff blows out. I don't want them here because that is a countywide problem now. I want to stay at the seven hundred dollars.
So you're basically saying at seven hundred dollars, you would hopefully weed out people who make five dollars here and ten dollars there. And if you really are a multi hundred thousand dollar business, while Lynette may not want to pay it, it's not breaking the bank for her compared to a guy that's charging five dollars and making a hundred dollars a month and he might think differently now.
So you're using it as a deterrent.
I'm, I'm talking as a deterrent because I just got done talking to a person about all they, they don't live in our community, but they're picking up trash bags from Red Oaks. They have the red, they're orange with the Red Oak Tiger on it out in their fields. And if that's from some of those picker uppers in town that just have their trucks, that have the sideboards on it without a cover top, it's a countywide problem. That's why I want to stay seven hundred bucks so we can weed those people out. I'm staying at seven hundred.
Okay. So we have a motion.
Well, do we have a motion? They have a motion, so we have to fail that. So some, you can both either withdraw your motion. If you withdraw, then she needs a second or it's dead.
I'm gonna withdraw my second because I, after discussing it, I don't agree with the proposal, so.
So then either that you can call for another second and then it would die for lack of a second or someone else to make the second and then we can vote.
So you're proposing a per truck for two hundred?
Two hundred, two hundred dollars.
So I needed another second for that proposed motion.
Die for lack of a second.
The second, then I need a motion or whatever you guys want next.
So Tim, you're the one that brought this up. I mean, do you have a figure in mind that you feel like would be, uh?
Live at five hundred? Lynette, she was at an auction or anything.
I think any bids.
No, I didn't agree with Adam on some, on, on, you know, on, on that level, but I think, I think we could lower it and still be a, a.
I think a reasonable drop would be five hundred, I think I would, I could, I could live with that.
The reason I suggest the two hundred because I'm thinking like three residential trucks would make it, would made it cheaper than the seven hundred, but I wasn't thinking, considering the roll offs.
And I was, Sharon, I was right there with you until the discussion came up and we kind of talked this through. Then it's like, oh yeah, you know, that really doesn't.
And the thing about the per truck, even though it might help somebody, it does make more work.
For you guys.
And then it encourages the little guys that would then get two hundred dollars if you're trying to keep them out.
Fine, I'll make a motion
Okay.
to approve the third and final reading with the amendment of five hundred dollars for the fee, for the permit fee.
For the permit fee for these callers.
Yes.
Okay.
Where I'm at.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. So Frey off and Bills, this is five hundred dollars. Ebrich?
No.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Frey off?
Yes.
Isaac?
No.
Okay. Moves forward, this is three to two votes on the final reading. Number eleven, this is resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one. This is bad check fee increasing that to fifty dollars.
Those delinquent.
Okay, I'm sorry, I look back, I'm sorry. Number eleven is resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight, thirty, collection of the delinquent utility bills. This is a shame.
What?
This is a shame and I'm so glad you caught it. And I think what you're proposing is very good. It's, it's huge, I mean, this is, so basically over the past fifteen years, we have approximately a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars that have not been collected amongst eight hundred and sixty-four delinquent utility accounts. Um, and of those a hundred and thirty-one accounts are current with delinquent balances totaling approximately twenty thousand. The remaining seven hundred and thirty-three accounts are closed and date back as far as fifteen years with their delinquent balances contributing to a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars of the city water and sewer utilities. So, uh, the resolution that Lisa has prepared is proposing that on the current accounts that we would proceed with the property tax roll for collection. Uh, because those folks are still more, um, accessible. And they've also been notifying landlords for rental visits of properties since about half of our properties are rentals. They've been a la, uh, letting those landlords know that in the future they're going to be uh, notified if their tenants don't pay. And then as far as the closed accounts, that a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, since the landlords no longer have access to these folks, um, Lisa's suggesting the Iowa set off program, which recover, recovers delinquent amounts, um, by intercepting individuals' state tax refunds. And their accounts are no longer active. And then moving forward, the responsibility for delinquent accounts will basically, um, basically our city attorney has advised that she is comfortable with the city pursuing the collection from landlords for delinquent utility billing dating back ten years. She's advised that it would be legal for the method of collection to be property tax liens. However, due to the significant time that has passed in the delinquency of these accounts, Lisa is recommending that in order to move forward with these collections from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-five, that the, that only in this instance, that the city hold the past tenants solely responsible for the payment of the delinquent utility bills through the set off program. And then moving forward, it will like, so we'll call back on the landlord. We want to.
So I have one add-on to that. Uh, Suzie and I spent about eight hours yesterday trying to get this list together, at least for the tax lien ones. And there are landlords that sometimes end up being the account holder in between tenants that are very delinquent. I think we found another five thousand dollars. So the point of going to the set off for closed accounts was under the assumption that it is a tenant that made it delinquent and the landlord is no longer in a relationship with that person. And so if you're the landlord and you've been the landlord the whole time, why are we not leaning you? So I would want to add one in the conclusion that any past accounts that are owner occupied and still the owner, that they are also gonna get a tax lien letter going out tomorrow, Wednesday. And it's about five grand. And it's fairly frequent flyer landlords who have very delinquent tenants, but they're delinquent themselves. So this isn't a, I can't call Adam my tenant and tell him to pay up anymore. So I don't think they should get the exemption.
So the set off program, it does have a time limit or is it ongoing?
Forever, but it's not easy to collect because they have to still be in the state. They have to have a refund, so if they owe or it's, it's basically income tax rebates or lottery winnings. So it's harder to collect down there. So this should not be a practice going forward, in my opinion. Like the tax liens are where you take the weight. And the biggest reason that so many are delinquent is, is actually more than the collection methods is that you never made people fix their shut offs. So you have people that just literally snub us every month for a payment because we cannot shut you off. And promise you, when people get shut off, they pay attention. So the next step that's actually more important is shutting people off, which is that we have to give them a ten day notice to get their own shut off fix. And then we have the right to say, if you're not maintaining your service properly, we have, I think, six of those bills that we paid somewhere between fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars. And those will all also unrelated to delinquent bills, they're not on here, but those are also getting leaned. And one of those houses is a bill that, uh, I shut them off because they had a leak. So they were forced to let us fix it. So that got fixed. As soon as it got fixed, we shut them off and they owed us over three thousand dollars. And then they came in and said, I have eight kids and I can't pay my bill. And I said, well, I guess you should have thought about that over the last three years when you have paid us nothing and made no effort. And they were like, can we have a payment plan? I'm like, no, because you broke payment plan after payment plan. So they were off, I would say, a month or two. And then I allowed them to go back on with a two thousand dollar payment. And then they understood that whatever is left in May, that is going on the tax roll because they are the owners, these are not tenants. And then they are one of them that we have a lien for on, or will have a lien for, for the repair. So they still have almost two thousand dollars in utility bills and they're gonna have a twenty-five hundred dollar repair, and so their lien will be over four thousand dollars. But again, we don't give out free water, in my opinion. If the council wants to say that we give out free water.
Well, we had been in the business of giving out free water.
Yeah, and again, like, you know, this is, this is definitely an administration policy. I think it's important, like there are still staff people that are here and they can only do what policies they were allowed to administer. And so it really comes from the top down. And it's important that people's behavior changes when we act differently. And that isn't meant to be mean, that isn't meant to be that, you know, if there are legitimate things where people have been making an effort and they have a blip in life with a health scare or anything like that, like we definitely work with people. But the, the people who are delinquent just don't pay, period.
Do they need to excuse if they didn't get the letter or do we send a register or how?
These letters that'll be going out or the bills?
Uh, in the past.
The letter. I mean, and Bill, we just.
The delinquents are pink, right? They go out.
They, they're called a delinquent notice and they get uh, ten days, so we're also like, we can talk about this on our next part, but we're gonna be making some changes in practice that people are going to have an adjustment in life because we're letting people go way too long, which is why we're gonna talk about the deposit and everything else, but I'll explain that later. Uh, but basically you get a bill, then you get, uh, quite a bit of time, much more than most communities. And then you get what you're talking about, which is you can either call it a delinquent or a shut off notice. And you get ten more days. And then of the, say, fifty people that are delinquent at any given time, there might be twenty of them that there's just nothing we can do about because we can't shut you off. So we send a shut off notice to try and stimulate a payment, but if they know they can't be shut off, then there's no motive to come and pay us.
And by the end of that timeframe, it's almost three months.
It's sixty days, so I'll explain that when we get to the next thing, but it's
Two months.
super, it's too lenient.
Yeah.
And some of it comes to light when you're actually at the front counter. So this transition to new software so that I at least understood how to take a payment if everybody's busy and I can, like I didn't know how to take payments in G-Works, but now I do. Um, so as you're standing at the screen, looking at someone's bill and what we're making people pay is kind of where we've morphed away from the actual due dates and gotten to a sixty day cycle instead of a thirty day cycle. I'll explain it. Which is also why we're gonna, I'm asking for shortening the pay period, that, that the period they have to pay and going to a due date of the fifteenth. So there's a bunch of things that I feel like this is step one to try and wipe these off. And then there's how are we giving people time to pay the deposits that we're collecting? Things like that. Hopefully we're not gonna ever have hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, and again, remember most houses are thirty to seventy dollars on a utility bill. And so these are not, and these are not mostly commercial, there's a couple of commercial ones, but.
We're at least half, if not a two thirds cheaper than everyone else around us in the water rates, so.
So Lisa explained something to me about, so if I'm a landlord and I have a tenant that's been in arrears, I know nothing about her.
Now you do.
Well, now I'm going to, but, but I hadn't in the past and, and they owe you fifteen hundred bucks. And they, and they leaked half. What happens to me?
So nothing under my proposal. What Bree is saying is that we have by right and we've always had a code that says if you own it, you pay. So pick good tenants and pay attention to your tenants. And the only way we had to pay, the only, only way we had to notify a landlord by code is if they made a written request to us to get it. And we basically don't have any of those. Like there might be people that call and are good about, like there's a few landlords that are super good about checking. The rest, none of them have given us a written notice. So we were not giving out the notices, but we also weren't being asked to give out the notices. So there's some level of like, hey, what's our due diligence? What I came in and said two months ago was I don't care who asked or didn't ask, we are going to start mailing them because it's well worth a third of a sheet of paper and a stamp to stimulate a tenant getting a call from their landlord to say, hey, because the landlord, and it's said in there, you may not have gotten these before, but you're getting them now because we're going to be leaning your tax bill going forward. So if you want to pick people like that and you don't want to communicate, like they have more clout, I think. Once we get shut off power, we obviously have the best clout. But we, it'll take a little bit of time to get all those shut off. But if your landlord's bugging you, and then many landlords also say, then I'm going to give them eviction notices because are we working together? And that's my thing, if we're gonna hold them accountable, are we working together to say, we want to find the best tenants that we can who pay their bills because we don't give out free water?
I, I like that because also gives that landlord a paper trail if they have to take that tenant to court. So therefore they can collect back fees or.
They can go back and make them.
It actually helps us out, um.
So we're giving a, while it's still is legal to go after the landlords, this is saying that because we all could have done better, we were not doing anything illegal, but we all could have done better to communicate and collect and be more timely. But administration in the past did not have those policies that because of that, we are going to risk not getting as much money back, but we're going to go through the set off, which then holds the tenant accountable instead of the landlord. But if you're a current count, that is not, so you still have your tenant in there or you are the owner or you are an owner that is a final billed account, but you're still the owner and always were the owner. And it was like maybe seven accounts like that. Then we're gonna send you a letter, so that goes out this week. You have thirteen. You have thirty days to pay. The letter says you have thirty days to pay this. And if you don't, we're sending it to the county as a tax lien. Then it goes to Jackie in the treasurer's office. She creates a bill. That goes on to the property tax bill. And then now you will be tax, property tax, delinquent and potentially lose your house if you don't pay it. So again, that stick is. Strong.
And this is state code. Yes, sets this. This is not Lisa coming up with this.
No, our code has always said these things. You just didn't use it.
It's following.
Right.
It's just being followed now.
Yeah. Cause what do I always say? I like to follow the rules.
We had the code, it just wasn't followed. And now we're following the code.
Right. We always had the code that said we could come and fix your shut off. And we didn't. We just let people have free power, or excuse me, free water. And then we also had the ability to put it on the tax liens. And there was definitely a time when we were decent about the set off program, not really good, but Suzie did an awesome job. When she was in that role before she took over the new role um doing that. But what happened was a little bit. Uh, around two years ago in late two thousand twenty three, the whole set off program got shut down and redone in a new system. And then you had to like redo all of them and sign up for a new thing. It looked like Kyra brought before you to get it on there. And then. It just was super hard. I remember that I was in Cascade and it was super complicated to get that going. And so that sort of fell to the wayside with busyness. So that's why, again, like we just did an update to the portal for like how many bills, like we told the bills. To uh, it's a download. So when you go onto the new portal, you'll actually be able to see a bill when you log in, if you want to pay that way or have a portal thing. And instead of having like twenty six hundred bills that downloaded this afternoon on my computer, it was four thousand. So that's every single bill that's not satisfying. If there was a bill, there was a PDF created when we just went through this process with today and it was like four thousand sixteen. So that tells you there's like really fourteen hundred, but some of them could actually be back to like two thousand eight.
Can we publish those? Delinquent bills. That kind of makes people pay.
That'd be a lot of paper.
Yeah, that would be.
It'd be a special insert to do that.
So do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty?
With the amendment is my request of including owners that are closed accounts, but still the owner and they were like a landlord. Even if it's still.
I would make a motion to approve that.
Okay, right off.
I'll take it.
Keep running. Any further discussion?
Yeah, at some point in time I would, I so do we know exactly how many of the uh? Problem. Uh, properties are a result of a bad shut off.
I feel like when Donna runs the shut off list, say there's fifty of them on there. It's almost half of them that we can't shut off.
So.
Those are broken shut offs. There's physically no way to take the tool and go and cut your wire up. So you have to call, you have to give them a letter, which is what I'm saying. We did like six properties both. So basically I'm saying the more you owe us, the quicker you get on the list. Cause we can't do them all at one time. There has to be enough plumbers or whoever. So we picked two plumbers last fall. And said each of you are going to get three. And so of those six that they did, so it's basically you get a ten day letter saying, Adam, we can't shut you off. Your order to fix it. And if you don't, we are either coming ourselves or we're going to hire somebody. So in my opinion, we have a lot of other work to do that is really to take care of our stuff. And so the penalty for us is that we have to pay the bill till they pay us. So that's the downside of hiring the plumbers, but we just don't have time. So that's another thing. I think they don't have time as a staff to just go be repairing all these. So anyway. So there were six of them. We picked the highest amount of money that you owe. Remember I said the four thousand dollar people? They were on the top of the list. So I said, for all the people that we can't shut off, the more you owe, the quicker you're going to get us. And we're going to get your ten dollar letter or your ten day letter. So that's about, I would say we did six and there's probably another two dozen.
So I'm going to vote for this, but I'm going to muddy the water a little bit before I do. Because it's always been my contention that that when we hold people responsible to repair. Infrastructure that is not only not on their property, but on our property, which would include ninety percent of the shut off. I just, I don't know how. I I mean, I get that that we can do it by the state law, but morally as a city, I don't know how we can do that because. First off, they can't repair it themselves because they have to have a million dollar liability policy to go do it. Uh, you know, they can't just go buy the equipment. They can't just go buy the the materials to make this repaired. Once again, I I think that uh that the city should be responsible for everything from shut off back.
So then you're proposing that we would increase the fee significantly to pay for that because right now the sewer is already in the hole.
But if they need.
And they don't have enough money.
You know, I, you know, I I'm just saying, I just, I I find it, I find it uh hard to swallow. When people are getting charged for some, when we, when we're, we can't go shut somebody off because we're waiting for them to repair it. When it's on our property and has and not on theirs. And 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 the taxes have been being paid to maintain that infrastructure for a hundred and fifty years. So.
But no, they haven't because we're not charging enough. To pay.
That's not, but but it once again, that's not, that's not that homeowner's fault.
But but you're saying they've been paying. So that's where I would have an issue is that they have not been paying enough.
Whatever we prescribe.
Correct. But it is not enough.
I I understand that it's not been enough, but once again, it's the principle of it, not the cost.
Well, no, it's no different than sidewalks. It's no different than sidewalks. It's no different than the terrace that you have to mow the lawn.
Exactly.
But that's just like communal living that cities have. Like we can't go, we would never be able to. Collect enough taxes to say, we'll come shovel this.
But it, but a sidewalk and a mowing, mowing a lawn is is not uh uh being able to live in a, on a property. When you shut the water, it can't.
But but we won't shut you off if you pay your water bill.
Uh, no. I'm going to vote yes on this. I just wanted to muddy the water a little bit because I don't, I don't, once again, I don't think it's right that we require people to fix things on our property.
Roll call for number eleven. Bradley.
Yeah.
Bill.
Yes.
Frydall.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Hey, Frank.
Yes.
All right. Number twelve, resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty one. This is the bad check fee, increasing it from thirty five dollars to fifty. And also the stop payment reissue check fee of fifty five dollars.
Thirty to.
I'm sorry, thirty to fifty, thirty to fifty.
And then we have no fee right now if we have to do a stop check. So if somebody loses their check. Like we had somebody call and say like, I can't find my check. So under most like good handshake deals, you would say, okay, just if you get it. If you find it and we've issued you a new check, just don't cash it. And Suzie was telling me about somebody that cashed it. And so we didn't do a stop work, stop check order, which costs us thirty two dollars and fifty cents at the bank. Thus the reason I'm saying fifty five dollars for that. Because if we have to pay the bank thirty two and then you're just giving us twenty dollars to go through like. The rigmarole of it.
We're still losing money.
But at least not making money. We're not just trying to be jerks to charge a fee, but. Um.
Costs money to do it.
It feels like you should just be able to say, and I, and in fairness, I think it was a business that did it. So let's just say like. Something turns over or you know, you have like a payables person and a receivables person and then somebody found the check and. Sends it through not knowing, you know, you just don't know. And in a bigger company, I think it was a business check. But I guess the best practice would be if you want us to stop your check. That we should tell the bank to stop it. So we don't have to pay attention and risk cashing it twice.
And you also point out in this that if they've, if they have given us a bad check, they can no longer use checks to pay. So they'll have to do cash, credit card, cashier check too. Okay.
Can they do ACH if they?
Yes.
No, 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 not that, because that's no different than a check. You don't have it in there electronic scoop versus paper check.
So so if they go, but here's the deal though, if they, if they come in and they use a credit card or a debit card, they're still going to get charged to. Fee on that at the.
Now they are.
So they're still going to be paying. Two dollars and fifty cents more or how much was it?
Yeah, on most utility bills, that's a fair. Dollar amount. It's two point nine percent plus thirty cents on the credit card and no, they would not be eligible for AC.
I witnessed a couple of transactions the other day, like a dollar, eighty, dollar, fifty kind of stuff. And that's what the thirty cent fee.
You know, we could even say if you want to add in here like. Uh, if a twelve month passes and we can, you know, take off here, you can't write a check again or something.
Well, that's the deal. People are paying a check because they don't want to pay the two dollars and fifty cents fee.
Again, moral of the story is please have money in your bank when you write it.
Right. Exactly.
I I don't know if we need to do it forever and ever amen though.
You could say like it's for twelve months and then you get another change.
I think that would, I think.
I think it should include that, Lisa.
Well, we did have three people this last week who were told about the credit card fee and they went and got cash. So whether they paid it or we saved forty thousand dollars collectively for the course of a year. The guy didn't believe me when he said it's forty thousand dollars that we're spending on credit card fees instead of fixing stuff.
So can we put like an addendum in there after two weeks? Or or two, after a year, something that they can go back to writing. Yes, something.
So let's just say the.
Somebody might have a bad check once because they're overdrawn or whatever.
Things happen, like we said, you might have a water, I don't touch broke, you're paying for it.
I mean, just my opinion, if they do it twice, then you're out.
Yeah.
But if they do it once, it could be a, you know, a cash flow problem.
It is.
So the first time you'd still get the fee and then you want to do the second time is when we take all your privileges?
Better because by then they're going to pay attention. The first time, I mean, in business, I have a bad check once in a while. It's usually. From the business that has a cash flow problem. I'm sorry, but I always give them the benefit of the doubt.
Want to change that then to your second one is when you get your privileges?
Yeah, yes. Cause anybody can get that.
For twelve months.
Okay, so.
So second check is when the no.
I don't have a motion or yet.
I'm just saying that we can make that motion. So second check would be where there's no check writing privileges. And then whenever those privileges go into effect, it would be twelve months later.
Yeah.
I don't think we have a ton of them. I don't know. Do we get one? You get notified by the bank, one or two a month at that?
I I think that would be fair if somebody.
Okay. All right. So I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution with those changes. I'll make the motion uh for resolution twenty twenty five thirty one, bad check fee. Um, fifty dollars and stop payment reissue check for fifty five after. The first check on the second check, if it's been um set back.
Okay.
With a twelve month.
No check writing.
No check writing privileges and paid cash only.
Okay. Or a card.
Or a card.
Okay.
All right. And a motion like. Hey, Frank. Any other further discussion? That's state to ask you guys. Roll call. Bill.
Yes.
Frydall.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Hey, Frank.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yeah.
All right. Number thirteen. This is ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three. To increase the water deposit to one, from one hundred dollars to two hundred dollars.
Now it's seventy five to one hundred.
So I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Two hundred is the ta- taxi.
Got it. The line on the agenda is different from how I was reading. And then establish a monthly due date of the fifteenth. And a temporary vacancy fee of forty dollars. This is the first of three readings.
So first of all. We hardly ever have any sort of, okay, so when you do a deposit, first of all, if you're an owner. So that you're responsible for the bill and it's your bill, after twelve months of no delinquent payments, you can have your deposit back. If you are a tenant, you are not eligible to get your deposit back. So if you think about the vast majority of tenants that we have, we only have a handful every month of people that get a refund when they move out. Which tells you that. The deposits are not covering people's last payments, which is encouraging more delinquency. So if you look at, you know, like I'm probably the smallest water user, like. I literally take a shower and I hardly ever home. And I have a thirty five dollar bill. So that means that my bill, if I'm staying current. Would always cover it. But anybody bigger, you know, just even two people, does that put you at fifty to sixty dollars? Because the base doesn't change, but your usage does. You're barely covering a month. And then if you have a big user, that's a little bit higher. You're definitely not covering a month. But we hardly write. When you do those refund checks every month, you think about that that's like final payments and that's homeowners that are getting refunded. And as I was discussing with Suzie and Donna, I'm like. It's a third of a page. It's not very many people, which means that we're just not covering it. So my proposal is a hundred dollars. There's a a thing in the code that if landlords do certain paperwork, then their tenant has to pay a higher fee. And that would be a two hundred dollar deposit because again, uh, it's different rules. Um, and then we're charging people twenty five dollars right now. To if you, if you want to do snowbird, you want to go away and we have to come out. And shut you off and turn you back on. It's twenty five dollars right now. It's been that fee for a long time. So I'm proposing that that would go up to forty dollars.
Does forty cover our expenses? I mean, I don't even see that that covers our expenses for them.
I think it does. And I hate to say it, but it's a little bit of. When you make it so cheap that it's encouraging, you're creating more work for us. Kind of like when you had that philosophy of like, keep the fee high enough for the garbage people like. You shouldn't want it to be that everybody's shutting their water off all the time. It would be better that it's a little bit cheaper just to pay your bill because you make a lot of work. And then. On the billing side. So is it covering it? Probably not, but it's going from twenty five to forty. So.
Cause there's expense in the office and there's expense in the field. Plus our trucks and all the above.
I would say again, it's close to break even at forty. Not making money by any means.
We're certainly not discouraging it into practice.
But at least then you think if you're a snowbird, you have to do eighty dollars. And balance if that's worth, that's at no usage. If you were gone for three months, it'd be better just to leave it on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we have any that do that?
Fair number.
Well, it all depends on the water consumption. We were talking summer and everything else. I've been, I mean, I'd think an eighty bucks to turn on, shut off, I think that's probably a. Pretty good thing to do because they have less worries than though maybe pipe exploding or whatever.
That's the other.
So I would rather take the eighty bucks, I'd rather pay the eighty bucks if I'm going to be a snowbird. That's the way I'm thinking.
Well, I do, I do some of that snow birdy myself and, you know, I turn it off in my basement. But I don't have it turned off at the curb.
That's not full proof.
But I don't turn the heat off in my house. Right, that's true.
And your furnace can break. Fun fact.
Yeah, I mean, I I. I think forty bucks is fine.
And um, we we kind of discussed the days already, so.
So when you think about the cycle, I want to talk through the cycle. So right now we send you your bill on your first. Uh, we are also going to have e-billing now. So we're going to try to encourage people. So when the advantage back to the citizen, when we, if we do this, we're going to take days away from them. But everybody knows the bill is coming. And this is not a surprise bill. So you just have to plan on the fifteenth now instead of the twentieth. If this were to go through, I'm saying that we have the due date. So right now you give the citizens twenty days and you leave us ten days. To do our business of sending you a delinquent notice, trying to shut you off, do that kind of stuff. And then you're constantly cycling to the next bill. So the reason that we consider it almost a sixty day cycle right now is this. So say we send out a bill on February first and it's due on February twentieth. We don't send delinquent notices until the next March tenth or twelve. So you are literally twenty days after the due date, the way that we're currently doing it somewhat because we're just jammed up. From when we have it due on the twentieth, we apply the penalties on the twenty first. And then you have a little bit of time to get these delinquent notices out. And then you're already up against billing. And so by opening that window up by five days, we should be able to say we apply the penalties on the sixteenth. You then would send your shut off ten day notices seventeen, eighteen, and then the ten days in the shut off are before you print the next bills. On the first. So but what people are used to here, which is going to be the uncomfortableness. And I don't know if I have to think about all the changes that are coming and do some sort of a newsletter and bite the bullet and mail everybody out something in an envelope. You can't fit it on the postcard. But the other thing that people are used to, so what happened the other day when I was with Donna. Was a lady came in and she had a February balance, a March balance, and now an April balance. Right? Cause we had just sent out the April first bill. So as I'm standing there watching what she's about to tell the lady that she owes, she only told her the February balance. Even though we were in April and she had a due date of March twentieth that was also delinquent, but because of how spread out our cycle is. We're not telling people that they owe in April what was due in February and March. Because remember I said that if you, if you owed it on March twentieth, we're not even sending you a delinquent notice. So even though it's late. The staff has been taught, trained, expected to let everybody go. In April and still not really say to stay current, you have to pay your March twentieth bill until we send the late. In April and still not really say to stay current, you have to pay your March twentieth bill until we send the late notice. It is still due if someone is standing at the current. So this is going to be an uncomfortableness because there are many accounts that live on the edge. And what I mean by that is they are always paying February and April and then in May they pay March and that has to stop. Because that's also perpetuating why we have so many delinquencies. Because by the time they leave, they could be sixty days behind and then another bill is coming that we have to final bill them. So they could actually be ninety days when you send them a final bill if they're right living on the edge.
So this puts us on a forty day cycle or a thirty day cycle?
Thirty.
Thirty.
So you get it on the first. And again, what I would say is like, as people feel like, oh gosh, like it takes time to get your postcard, sign up for e-billing, good for everybody. So what'll happen is that on the, so they'll print the bills on the thirty first, the postcards will go in the mail. But as soon as the second cycle for Donna will be that on the first, she'll go through the e-billing. Get it on your online account and as soon as she hits that, you instantly have an email in your box. Saying what your bill is and you can see the bill.
What's the late pay percentage?
Ten percent. So on a thirty dollar bill, if you ever look at your postcard and says if you pay by the due date and if you don't.
Yep, you're right.
So it's like two, three dollars, I would, you know, four dollars maybe, but it's ten percent, so. I think all of this goes to super common, lots of cities have the fifteenth for the due date. I don't know of anybody that says you really don't have to pay sixty days. But there is going to be a level of like, so in my mind, like. Again, when I was talking to the staff about it, they're like, well, everybody just has to pay on time, what's the difference? But I said, it's going to take everybody one blip. Cause they really have to pay two to get on the right one, like they're always paying once a month. Many are paying once a month, but in order to get on the right cycle, you're going to have to come one time and pay twice. Because you have to get rid of the ninety and the sixty to get to the once a month thirty. But I just don't like, like it's, it is a serious problem. So again, the summary of it is we are increasing the deposits. We're still saying if you're an owner, you get it back after twelve months and another great thing, just to explain how this archaeness was. So we have index cards for every deposit, they're in a, looks like a recipe box that has every single month. So when I moved in in September, my first bill would come in November and I have to not be, I'm not a bad example because I'm a tenant, but. If I owned it, I would be, my first bill would be in November, so then my deposit card goes into the November box. And then Donna has to pick, literally it looks like recipe cards, Donna has to pick fifty cards out from about fifty cards from November. Set them on her desk, she has to manually go into every one of those. Scroll down all twelve months and see if you're delinquent. And then has to, um, if you're, if you're not delinquent, she'll put you on the pile that you guys get when it says water refunds. And then if you're not, say then I was late in February, now I'm on the February check again in twelve months, so then she has to put me in the February file. And the great thing about our investment of new software is that as we went through the training and the setup. It is told for an owner that doesn't have a, a, that they're not a tenant, it'll say look back twelve months. And kick out a report and kick out the checks, like it is.
Like no more.
Literally, like think about, and think about how many times Donna gets interrupted to be able to look up those fifty accounts. Not just say like, oh, it's, she has to like literally go look for twelve payments and make sure they were not late. Right, and so there's so much that. I, I can't even like, once we get completely in the new world, like life will be very different. And we might as well just. That's why I brought this work, so. So it's changing the deposit, changing the number of days and then changing the temporary vacancy fees and this would be. A first reading.
I move to approve the first reading of the ordinance.
I will second, right off, Bradley. Roll call, right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Number fourteen is ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four to increase. The excavation permit fee to thirty five dollars, this is the first of three readings. Right now, it's currently ten dollars and it's just. It's administrative difference, so.
So the other thing, uh, we did, if you look at the paper copy that I gave you or it's in a separate file, if you look at the, your online dump, but. It was two things, one, we used to say permit holder or property owner and the uncomfortableness that I had with why I changed it the way that I did. To just say property owner, uh, which Bree had some concerns about, but didn't get a chance to look at it before packet time, so the one that's in front of you. It's wording it that at the end of the day, if we're fixing your pipe in the right of way. Even though we'll try to go after the permit holder, if it's the plumber, at the end of the day, the fee is your responsibility and it has to get leaned on your property. Because that's also happening where we've had holes in roads where people don't come back, they dig it up, I've heard that somebody's waiting for a plumber to fix us. A cutout in the road and it's been years, so it says, if you don't do it. We give you a notice and we're going to come and do it and that's not going to happen anymore. So Bree's comfortable with how she worded it, which is just slightly different that. It is the property owner at the end of the day and that we can lean in, so if you look at your, when you find the paper copy.
So I, I just want to get something in my head, so let's say I had my water shut off, break. It's on my right of way, it's on the city right of way, on my yard and I have to have them dig that up to fix it. Even stop box, I had to get repaired, let's say that happened, do I still have to apply for a permit on that because it's excavation, they're digging that up?
The excavating companies do, like right now, Bill Rogers is.
So that's what my question is, so if a person comes in, they're going to have that longstanding permit with you guys? To dig anytime to come to a property or is that?
It's per property.
Per property.
Right now it's ten, so like we do give a courtesy to our regular customers of like a Bill Rogers that. Uh, he just brings in the permit and then we invoice him out, so he doesn't have to be like worried about.
Cause they, they might be working on that property that night and then they could come in and get a permit the next day.
I mean, they definitely have to, if it's an emergency, there's a reference in there about.
Okay, cause that's what I want, I want to know because.
We're not holding anything up.
All right, that's because I don't want that to happen to somebody, because you don't want to go five or six days before. They, the plumber gets around to it.
First of all, it's turned around right now, but it, it has a provision in here that says for emergencies. You just have to go through the normal Iowa one call process, which you know, they can't just dig.
This gas leaks the same thing.
So again, and the only other thing that we added in here was also work comp insurance, there's been some conversations amongst various contractors that. You know, whether it's true or not, rumors are somebody doesn't have work comp.
True.
So this is just being clear that if you're working in our right of way, not only do you have to have liability insurance, but you also have to make sure that you have work comp and it would just be a one time.
And so we're making them provide that.
Yeah, which it, I think that many of them, it's not really an issue, but my level of like, well, it doesn't really say that in here that they have to, it talks about. Liability insurance.
We must not have made them in the past, provide those.
I think a lot of them did, but it just didn't say in the code, so if I'm going to come to people that have said, hey, I am and they aren't. Or I've heard they don't provide it, where's my, why you have to give it to me? Doesn't say that, so that's me just adding, not only is it liability of a work comp.
Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance? Bills?
I'll second.
He bring? Isaac?
Yes.
He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Number fifteen, ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero five to increase driveway permit fee to fifty dollars. Cause it also was ten dollars.
Right, so again, that's like our time to get out there, somehow Chris had been given the direction. In the past that we had to cut a curb when somebody was doing a dragway. We uh, kind of discussed that that, that is not in the code anywhere and if they have a qualified contractor that's doing it, like why are we making more work for ourselves? And we definitely aren't getting paid for it, so. Um, we had an example, the hospital's about to do a driveway, a different width of their driveway at the pharmacy. And he's like, well, in the past, we were told that we had to and I was like, well, it's not in the code. So if it's somebody that we know that's doing the work and we have it in the code where you have to cut it. Cause I think most of it was they were making sure they didn't cut it right at the gutter, that they go back to leave the correct line away from the gutter, so it's like. Twelve inches or eighteen inches away from the curb, so. I just let him know that, but we still need to go out, check it out, make sure it's okay, we process a little permit so that we know. Because obviously there, the driveway apron is again in the right of way, so we want to make sure that you do it properly, it's not gravel, it's, you know, all that kind of stuff.
And none of this requires an inspection from?
We would be like Chris, just checking it, so again, it's, these are not moneymakers, but at least we're not losing as much when we're spending time. Specifically doing something for one person's project. So again, first reading.
Right.
And it does say then that if you leave it open, you know, that was a year before, but. There was a little bit of it in, in the excavating, it talked about completion by the city, but it didn't specifically call that out in the driveway approach, so again, if you. Half finished it and we can then have a right to come in and say fix it and if you don't, we're gonna, we'll suss you. Trying to get people to finish their work.
Motion to approve, Bradley?
Second.
Right off? Roll call. He bring?
No.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
No.
Number sixteen, resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty two to approve the land lease for new cooperative for monitoring wells required by the Iowa D N R. This is around the area where the spill happened.
Lisa, go ahead.
This is going to be on our property?
Yes, and we're gonna fix them, we're gonna charge us.
Only one on our property.
Yes, on our property.
There are numerous, but many of them, most of them are on their property. So I spoke to the D N R just to make sure it was a requirement. And they said that usually they just get an okey doke and I just said, let's make this official and I just think for sake of. It being on public land, that I just created the hundred dollar fee, they said basically they don't normally get charged, but. I don't know, the co-op was maybe going to be online if anybody has any questions, but. Um, they typed up this little letter that I would sign if you approve it. It could only be a year or two, but we'll just have a reminder out there that they would pay us a hundred dollars and then we'll remind. Out in a year, the D N R will decide when it comes out.
Do we have any kind of liability?
I guess my question about that, what you're talking about is where it's at in regards to our uh, levy. And you know, when they put these in, D N R doesn't have anything to do with the Army Corps who's in charge of our levy. And so when they place this well, they need to make sure it's in a spot that's not going to undermine.
It's literally like a tiny little tube.
I, I know what they are, but we can't even farm up close to the levies.
Yeah, well, the D N R is aware of what it would take and that it would not compromise whoever.
Hopefully. You know, as long as they're communicating with the army, because the army could come in and say, this doesn't, this doesn't fly.
Yeah, I think it's just one small.
I, I got a question, do you think a hundred dollars is enough? That causes a lot of problems and I think they need to kind of own up for it.
We can't, we can't punish them for that.
They are, they're going through their, their part of. The public D N R and the Attorney General's office for that, when I charged the hundred dollars. When I put that in my proposal, the D N R called me and said, you understand what this is and I've never seen anybody charged before. So I just said, in my looking at things, like there's public purpose. And if we just start saying that everybody, and I think like a dollar is pointless, you know how you do, like a lot of times it's like, well, sell it to you for a dollar. To me, like it was a dollar amount that wasn't a dollar, but. He made it very clear, like this is a tiny little spot and all the cities that we've ever asked to do this have never charged and I was like, well, I feel like public purpose doctrine. Is my reason that there's, you don't just get to do free stuff. On city land, so that was my reason for a hundred.
And to your point, I'm for sure that the D N R has gone and prepared it.
It's two sides, there is a penalty on the D N R, which in my conversations with them, and I said that to them also, that I believe, you know, they're. They understand the severity of what happened, they also, you know, have to go through those. Public processes, but we support them being a business here and we want to see them come back strong and succeed and so. Um, when I talked to the D N R guy, because obviously I wasn't here when it happened, he just said, you know, there were very limited things that the D N R could do. And then that the rest goes to the Attorney General and I've heard about the public group. You know, coming forward and, and having concerns about it, and so I just said, with all of that going on, the attention that it gathered, I think it's appropriate to have it in writing. And some fee, and that's our recommendation.
The letters in there, I've got Lisa will sign one, so take a motion to approve the resolution.
I move to approve the resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty two.
Okay, he bring?
Second.
Bills? Further discussion? Roll call. Bradley?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
He bring?
Yes.
Number seventeen is resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty three, Judd, uh, Juddson Young, this is deed and transfer. Regarding three oh six East Elm Street, um, in twenty twenty three.
Freeman talked about not giving him the property until it was done, but in good faith, he's making a good effort, he. Uh, works on it on the side, obviously he's the owner of Napa for anybody that doesn't know him and so he's working his day job and trying to fix it up. So we um, communicated between Taylor who's seen it, Chief Bruce has been there. Um, and then also spoke to Phil at SWIP Co. and everybody concurs that he has spent a substantial amount of money and that it seems appropriate. That we would transfer it now, he's obviously, even though he's not done, he's done his good faith effort to show us that he's going to improve it. And so I would just like to see it off of our books, it's weird to me that he's doing all this stuff and it's on our books.
If you looked up pictures, it does show improvement on the outside.
Yeah, I looked at the pictures too.
And obviously the inside is, you know, everybody has a right to spend as much time, so like from our perspective, it looks nicer in the neighborhood. So I went and saw Judd and talked to him about it, spoke to Bree, like I said, talked to everybody that's been involved on the staff. And then asked Bree to prepare the deed, she's comfortable with the transfer, but because it talked about a substantial completion, I wasn't comfortable proceeding with. That because he's not done without coming back to you and asking her permission to turn it over. And he has reviewed all the paperwork and given us the lesson.
The res- resolution basically gives me the direction to sign the quick claim deed, which is in the packet. And Lisa to administrate it or execute it. And he has already paid the one dollar, so.
And it, it looks like the outside's been all cleaned up and he's maintained the grubs around it.
Yep.
I mean, that's happening.
Yeah, I think it's a good.
Yeah.
So take a motion?
Move to approve.
Right off?
I'll second.
Go ahead. He bring? Roll call. Bell?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yeah.
He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Number eighteen is resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty seven, approval to resurface the police and fire department floors.
I would ask the chiefs to come up, they're both here, so we talked about this, you know, there's clearly issues with the carpeting in here. Um, and so we kind of talked about what makes sense, carpeting is not going to be any cheaper and then both of the chiefs came. To me with the idea of having this epoxy, so maybe you guys can both kind of explain so they for sure know where we'd be talking about. The flooring and then the emblem idea.
And I can start with the fire department, you can see the lovely flooring here, but if we could get rid of it, I hope doesn't create an emotional distress for anyone. Changes hard. So for the fire department project, it was the front foyer. Um, which is our radio room, this hallway and this room, it's our main action areas. Um, with the water that we have through the front, unfortunately, and most certainly the reoccurring. Occasional water leaks this thing likes to have, uh, we want to go to a hard surface, also with our firefighters coming in. Class or whatnot, to make sure we could keep something a little bit cleaner, um, is what we were looking at too in minimal maintenance, so. Gail with concrete expressions came in to make sure, A, can we even do that? Um, and we can, and uh, he was able to provide. And uh, he was able to provide us a quote for ours to install the either a double broadcast, flake epoxy or a two coat colored epoxy with urethane um top coat. And what that is, is just to help um shed the water, especially when your main entrances, if you were to have some in and the long life of maintaining the floor, because it does get used quite a bit. So um this is only those action areas is all we are looking.
Do they guarantee it in this application?
In these applications?
How long?
Oh, I, do you remember a piece of the lifespan on it? They do like N S K and those big factories and grocery stores.
Um, sometimes the warranties are void for certain applications. That was the reason.
Yeah, and he didn't. I I don't remember him saying that. I don't, and I don't know. Uh, Lisa, do you remember if it was in that email that I sent you from Kale? It might have been a sidebar talk. Um.
I'm looking at their, their estimates now. I don't see anything.
Technically, would this happen?
Yeah, it might have been a sidebar talk if I remember right. I mean, we did talk about that, so.
We'd, we'd have to reach out to him to ask that question. He's, he was, to get him up here, it was kind of a challenge, honestly. He's been pretty busy.
You know, once again, it's not gonna affect my decision. I just, you know, would like to have the information at some point.
And and the police department, same way, other than we, we're looking at clear clear polish, which would be like in your, the newer grocery store where it's, it's just polished concrete with a um glassy look to it. And then uh, uh, in the patrol officer's room, it would be a four, four foot by six foot. I guess our badge insignia in in that office and then the chief's office.
And the sheriff's department's okay with that?
Yep, yep, I'm talking to the sheriff.
They talked about maybe at some point them doing it as well in their areas, just don't have good funding right now.
Yep. Are we gonna do like an emblem in here?
Uh, they, they did put in, I just had Kale throw in what it would cost to potentially do. We did two emblems, one that might be by that door, front door. Um, just so it would be built.
They've got Clorinda's example on page.
Yeah, I see that. Here's, here's my question. We're not, I mean, if we're gonna do this, I mean, would we think about maybe doing the bathrooms too and maybe the this whole area right through here?
Wish list would be nice. We were looking at a scaled back project of just doing the essentials.
Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, because we, I mean, true, you would want to do the offices and everything in one fell swoop, but we were just looking at reducing that cost and going to our main action areas. And maybe look at those later. I know exactly what you're saying, but.
Yeah.
Breaking it into a.
I was just thinking, if we're doing it, we're coming down this way. We get them here one time, we just do it.
Well, because it's also like your sleeping quarters, the day room.
Right.
There's lots of other areas installed.
And we just.
Yeah, that would be a lot.
Yeah.
And that's why we just scaled it back. We thought if anything, maybe going into the future, we could phase it, you know, phase project as to see how financials were, so.
Right.
How's that affect the sound? I mean, that could look good though.
There, he did, he did say there would be a, a little change in there. Um, but and he will reiterate the fact, I guess, most of his stuff is in an empty metal structure when he gets done. So he says the wall, the paneling on the walls and the, and the different things hanging. But it will, there will be a difference, but it won't be a, a drastic difference.
How are we paying for it?
Lost.
Lost.
For sure. They both had budgeted funds and are nowhere close to their last ones for this year, so.
And that amount is set by ordinance that only they can spend it on these types of things. So it can't be used elsewhere. I mean, it could be used for another project for you guys, but.
Do they warranty it for? And let's say we start putting down chairs, we're moving them, and there's a big scrape, do they come in and uh?
That's, we're not sure, but we'll ask.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll get all the fine tuning details on.
I'd like to see a warranty on that, I guess.
It will fuzzy. We just think it's a better idea than the carpet.
Oh, yeah.
We need to vote on it, I think, correct?
Yeah, I, 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 I like the idea. I'd like to see, I really want to get a warranty on it. I mean, holding a common rule for what they do.
Not a hundred percent certain. We got, we just gotta get the, I mean, he, he's been in Kansas, he's been in, he's been in N S K, he's been in Shenandoah, he's been, he's pretty busy right now, but I just assume if we can get him, hopefully get him here sooner than later.
Let's figure the sooner we tell him the go ahead, then the better chance, so yeah.
And he's got a schedule for us. He's been trying to schedule that around council, because it sounds like ours would be probably a two, two, three day process. Um, but he wants to make sure that we can be ready to go and not interrupt the council meetings. So we gotta do the logistics on that side, so we don't have to shut this down.
And then I think for chief, you can explain your plan when he's doing more.
What he's doing?
Like our plan for operations when he's busy doing it.
Oh, well, so we're also looking to replace our office furniture, uh, and as soon as they get a setback from that, uh, that'll be before you as well, but and so we're gonna, so we don't have to move things two or three times, try to coordinate with him to come in and bring all that stuff in. And there's uh, the machines they bring in are like tw- two thousand pounds, I, I guess, that they, they utilize. And so
Get the furniture out.
Coordinate with them to do the floors and then get the furniture and then get um the rest of the stuff.
And you would operate just out of the training room?
Conference room, yeah.
How long do you have to stay off the floors? From here?
Uh, I want to say he said that's two days.
A day or two, I think, depending on what.
That's gonna take them through here.
Well.
That's not a long time.
It was better than what we got.
Now, is it gonna have the fleck in it too?
That's one of the options.
One of the options. Is that a different pricing option that's like in there? Good.
We simply pick which direction we want to go.
I wish it was more than one year.
Uh, yeah, and I I'm sure maybe, you know, he says in his construction projects, he just sent me back a message that it's a, it's a one year. So then I'm sure we got probably under that cloak of what they give the factories and we're not running forklifts on ours, so I would think the life would be, but I'm sure that's probably what it meant.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate you.
One more, ease.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so let's, let's finish this. Um, do we even have a motion? A motion approved. Hey Bradley?
Okay.
Bills? Roll call. Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Phil?
Yeah.
All right, resolution, this is number nineteen, resolution twenty twenty, actually, this is supposed to be twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four, police and fire records fees. And I know I'm guilty because Justin had given me these figures and I just never got around to getting it done for you.
Yeah, so this has been a process for the last couple of years, I think, uh, and, and trying to up these, uh, a lot of us have gone to dig- digitalize where they're wanting U S B drives. And, and I think we were at twenty-five dollars and, and maybe twenty dollars, I don't remember what it was, I'm trying to remember here. So we, we've upped those about ten dollars. It, it, uh, also along with the black and, or the color copies, we've gone up with those. And then we went up uh, five dollars in, in the color copies, three dollars in black and white. And then ten dollars in the other, other stuff, so.
Seems pretty cheap for what, what you provided.
Yeah, and.
That's a lot of work.
It does take a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of work to, and Kim can attest to that. I mean, there's a lot of work that goes into retrieving all this stuff, especially body cam, camera footage.
So usually the police department has more requests, but um in the way the resolutions, even though it's on um the police department's letterhead, we basically wrote the resolution so that if there's any request of the fire department, it's identical fees. So even though this just looks like the.
Same practice we've been doing. Chief, do these fees cover your cost?
Uh, yeah, that, I mean.
I know.
I mean, ten bucks doesn't go very far.
Yeah, but ten bucks on a call for service, we gotta, we gotta go ahead and lift the call for service up and, and it's normally it's one or two pieces of paper. So that's.
But it takes a, takes a guy you're paying thirty bucks an hour to do it.
Got to be careful though with open records requests. It's a little different.
It, it gets a little touchy at times.
A little different.
I just want to make sure you're covering your expenses of doing it.
We never covered all.
We just say it's closer to.
It's, it's better than what it was.
Yeah.
So again, the resolution that is our recommendation would be that it is for both departments on this fee schedule. And it hasn't raised in a while.
No, uh, it's been multiple years. We, we didn't look at it here a couple of years ago. Nothing, nothing, it didn't, didn't come across.
And now it's done and it's simple, if I have them both of you guys. I take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
That's good.
He bring? Roll call. Isaac, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
All right, number twenty, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five. This is deleting property from the current Red Oak Urban Renewal Area. Basically, it only has had a year left on it. And so in order for um the Lorettes to benefit from the ten year increment of abatement, we have to take it out and then put it back in. So Lisa, if you want to explain that further.
So right, so in order to be able to capture the increment that I was recommending, and Brian and Dawn are here in the back there, so appreciate their being here in case there's any questions. But we had talked about wanting to do this as they progressed through their construction project. And so the first phase of the process is to eliminate the current two parcels. It used to be the one parcel and now it's, what was technically two, it'll be combined into one, which is the one what they're actually building the new funeral home on. So you would be deleting it with the form of a resolution first and ordinance second. They are requesting that we suspend the rules and do all three readings tonight. And then the next phase is simply to advertise a public hearing in May. That'll be to hold that uh as a public hearing as required by law. And then I'll get you, they did get me this afternoon, the urban plan uh amendment, and so we'll have that for review, less important for tonight, only because it's just to set the public hearing. So I would recommend all three. Obviously, we're working with Dorsey Whitney as our T I P attorneys. Um, ha- I did provide the packet that's in here so far. I had explained when Brian and I talked about what I was recommending, uh, which will be part of that later phases, but basically saying a ten year increment that'll have decreasing percentages. So when they've been spending the most on their construction, we're giving the highest rebate and then it's weaning off. So the highest amount is ninety percent, then it skips down by five percent. When it gets to seventy, it skips ten and then goes back to five. So in the last year, they would be at forty percent. Um, as a sample, I took a one point two million dollar building that's assessed at that right now. And then just did the percentages of what that would be. And then you always want to leave a cushion just because you don't know what the assumptions are. So the plan would be a maximum rebate of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, in the way this adds up, it's in the four hundreds if the value stayed the same, but you just don't know. We don't know what their value is going to be and we don't know what taxes.
And so it's my understanding that the state is rearranging the way they're charging property taxes and the commercial property is going to be taxed more on the same level as residential property going forward. So this, this, I mean, this chart may completely change.
Right, it could be that they get less money, but if that happens, it would be based on them paying less taxes.
No, I, I, I totally get that, but, but once again, this chart may be, you know.
The numbers are just examples. The percent would stay the same, but if all of a sudden um, a commercial property was being, remember how we talked about that it's at ninety percent? So you're paying on a much higher value. However,
Yeah.
if you're paying on a residential way, you're gonna pay a lot less. So you're, again, your ninety percent is gonna be less, but it's based on a smaller.
It should still be the same benefit for them.
It would be the same percentage because they'd be paying less, so they would get less. But you still want to leave it in case like people talk a talk down in in Des Moines, but you don't know if it's actually gonna change, so.
I agree.
We want to keep the key, the percent stays the same, but we don't want to assume that's gonna happen and then keep their maximum low in case that happens. You want to keep the maximum high so it doesn't change that it's still the same intended benefit to the Lorettes.
It's gonna be fantastic. Looks beautiful. I took pictures this weekend, so I'm excited to have you guys doing this. So thank you for your investment. Really. Thrilled to have Lisa on board too, who can help us with this.
But I think it's four votes. You'll have the vote to delete the resolution, to delete the property. Then we would need a motion to suspend the rules and consider two thousand twenty-five dash zero six as one adopted ordinance. Then you would adopt that ordinance and then you would do the resolution set in a public hearing, which means I can get it in the paper.
We have to do this in four separate?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's twenty through twenty-three.
I'll, I'll, I'll move to uh for twenty, twenty-five dash thirty-five, deleting that uh urban renewal area.
Okay, Bills?
Second.
Right off? Full discussion? Roll call. He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Number twenty-one, motion to consider waiving the requirement to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero six at three separate meetings instead of adopting all three readings at one meeting.
I make that.
Go ahead, sorry.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Right off, Bradley?
And this has a higher standard. It has to be a four to one vote or you can't.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Bradley?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
He bring?
Yes.
Number twenty-two is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero six, deleting the property from the Tax Increment Finance District for the Red Oak Urban Renewal Area of the City of Red Oak, Iowa pursuant to section four zero three point one nine of the Iowa code, of the code of Iowa. And this would, we also need a possible suspension of the rules for all priorities.
That's what we did last.
That's what we did first, just trying to get crystal clear. Yes.
All right, so this would be a motion to approve all three readings of that ordinance.
It's our move.
Isaac?
Second.
Bills? Any further discussion? Roll call. Phil?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes. And then twenty-three, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six, this is setting the date for the public hearing on designation of the expanded Red Oak Urban Renewal Area and on Urban Renewal Stand Amendment for May fifth twenty twenty-five at five thirty here at the Red Oak Fire Station.
A motion to approve. Okay, Bradley?
Second.
Right off? Further discussion? Roll call. Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yeah.
He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Number twenty-four, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine, wage range adjustment for the code enforcement nuisance officer. Back when we established the ranges, uh, depending on experience, depending on other things, um, we had originally set the range for twenty-two to twenty-six dollars an hour for this position. Um, this position is a lot of work and deals with a lot of really not so nice people. Um, so I think Lisa's making the proposal to, that we increase it to twenty-four to twenty-eight dollars an hour. That would be closer to our assistant director positions in our department heads. As well.
Assistant director.
Assistant department head.
It's a tough job.
It is, and it's, and it's a lot. It's a lot of work.
And, and we were, and we're pushing them. We're requiring them to do a lot right now, so.
I sort of looked at it like when we had our strategic planning, that was one of our top goals and um chiefs are both still here, but we, um, I selected them to be on the interview group with me just because they both obviously have to deal with the person a lot. And so the three of us did start interviewing people last week. Um, I think we have the potential for a good candidate, but I'm not comfortable offering that position at twenty-two dollars an hour unless that's what you feel like, but I think that's gonna be a hard sell. So I do think we have a good candidate that could work out. Um, the person has made more money than this, even at the increase. And so I just explained that, you know, this is not an endless supply that we can just go significantly higher than other city employees. But I do think when you look at the line of work and when the three of us discussed it, the chiefs are also supportive of that adjustment. So I would be looking to hopefully hire in the twenty-six to twenty-seven. And um, so I need the range to at least be up to twenty.
That'll be forty, forty hours, right? Position.
Do you feel like you have somebody hired then?
Um, we have not decided on that, but we at least had an interview that I thought, I don't want to lose this person. And that's why I wasn't really planning on bringing it up right away, but after, the deadline was technically Friday, so.
Well, it's encouraging.
Good. I think he would do a good job.
Good. Oh, I just don't want to revolve the board.
Well, and I just, I want to point out, Taylor did a fantastic job. He he really did a fantastic job and he spent a lot of time trying to educate people and giving them a warning first. And and even he wrote us and he even said, we've got to have somebody that's firmer that can really hold people accountable. So.
No, most mostly did he leave because of pay?
That was one of the reasons, but I think at the end of the day, he never came and asked me for more pay to stay. Um and if you spent time knowing what it takes to do that, there's just some people that are cut from a cloth that can put their head down at night, knowing that you had uncomfortable situations that are because of other people's choices, not yours. And in some people's wiring, it's just sort of hard on your soul and.
True.
And so um.
You've got to have a pretty thick eye to get past the tears and the treatment and all under the customer.
Right, so part of mine, which I did even when we hired Ashley, was I'm a big person on like doing personality assessments and things like that because you can learn a bit in an interview, but like, how are you wired? You know, I take my position, but it's uncomfortable, the two chiefs positions, like we all have to do our jobs and we care about people and we care about the community. But at the end of the day, enforcement component is, can be hard on your soul if you're wired a certain way.
Hey, she tell the goal.
Yep.
He's a good man.
He's a good, good person.
He did a good job.
He did a good job. So I would take a motion to approve.
Hello.
Isaac?
I'll plug him.
Bills? Any other further discussion? Roll call. Isaac?
Yes.
He break?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Getting closer, number twenty-five, this is the amended uh line item. Twenty-five, resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty, hotel and motel grant funding. This is for the March twenty twenty-five requests. And basically, we have put it into a resolution for us to approve all of the.
Right, so I found, yeah, I found that it was just a, first of all, I'd asked Janice to come up. She's our liaison to the committee and I think she has a few things to share. Um so I asked her if she would speak, but I think it's important that we have an actual resolution that lists a group and which fund, oh, three, oh, because you split the money. And so go ahead as our liaison.
Hey.
I don't go to those.
The thing I, and you're always welcome to.
Yes, of course.
Um, the thing I want you, I know it's in this, but I want you to pay attention that since twenty thirteen, Lisa looked it up for me to make sure, but this program has contributed over one million dollars to uh local tourism, recreation and community development projects, and that is amazing.
It's huge.
It's it's huge. And I, I mean, I remember back in the day, we'd fight to get it, but it was so well worth it. And that being said, the ones we have are awesome. There was more applications than there was money, but that's a nice problem. And everybody did a good job presenting and then everybody got something. We don't always do that, but it was really good. And one of them in particular, but something new we made back and we've evolved a lot over the years. And one of the things is if it's a new project, we like to pay attention to that. So like the Jordan Bonosel Athletic Association for Chitaco Park, that was a new project and that was a no-brainer for the committee.
So they got the full amount of ten thousand where some got decreased, right? Like decreased from their request.
Right. And it's it's um, that was one of our rules that we changed because, well, there were two rules. An entity can only ask for one project per cycle. Because sometimes we had two and three from one and that just seemed like we were just spinning our wheels, you know, type thing. So then we did the ten thousand. We looked at some of the Iowa brands and they are that amount. And basically, it's a good amount for our community while we bring in. So anyway, I'm just just saying it's an awesome thing, so.
Thank you for all the work, because I know there's a lot of work to review those in the committee, so we appreciate you taking that, you know.
He does a lot of people work.
Yeah, sharing it on the committee as well.
Yes.
It's fun, so. From daily, so.
Thanks, thanks, you keep it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your committee.
Yeah, I I failed to get like, we at least, we're going to have the minutes in there, so that's why I amended it because. So this is approving it and then it's really up to Janice and the committee to make sure they get the appropriate paperwork. And then any second step would be, she would present to me, like you had a couple on here tonight on the bills, but then the, on the claims is what you would pay it. When you actually pay it, it'll be that it's on a claim and if it's on the claims, it's Janice and the committee have reviewed it, so.
Well, and when we're giving money out, we have to have that.
Right, so you just didn't have it in a resolution, like I found a year ago where you just had motion to approve the committee. So I'm more comfortable and that's kind of what I talked through. So she sent me the minutes that I could just copy into the resolution, so that was all.
Okay.
Move to approve the resolution.
Right off? Isaac? Roll call. He break?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Number twenty-six is final discussion on fiscal year twenty twenty-five, year-end discussion and fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget prior to the April twenty-first public hearing.
Only if anyone has any last minute questions about the budget, but you're probably like, it's like I'm talking about.
Only thing I have to say about our budget is just the first time that I've been doing this that I have a budget and I can understand and make sense of, thank you so much.
And feel confident and.
Yeah.
And I appreciate all the comparisons you've done for prior years and it really makes sense to me, so thank you for that. Eva, and she, I can tell you, she's putting a ton into this.
It's a lot.
It is a lot.
It's, once this is done and it's always so much easier with our new, because the new system can just easily download into Excel. So basically, you download it into Excel, that's what we use for the budget and then it just gets uploaded back into Civic. So it was kind of a lot of effort for one year, but I'm not going to give you the G-works version, so.
But that's the, should be easier next time.
For sure.
Thanks. Any other comments? Okay, number twenty-seven is the upcoming city council meeting, regular meeting, April twenty-first. And twenty-eighth is report and comment period. Department Head Kathy Most, Public Library, oh, she is here, I didn't see you back there, Kathy.
I took a back. Um, what I have to tell you is not a lot different um than what was sent out with your packet. Um, we've just been really busy um with lots of changes. We're not any different from anybody else. Um, we got a new camera system installed, which was was really true and needed. Um, got a new email, which was exciting and fun, um but we survived it. So I keep thinking we could sell shirts in town, I survived this, I survived that. Um, anyway, we've been doing a lot of cleaning. Um, the last phase we have is getting the gardens uh ready. Um, they already came to low ones, which was wonderful, because we started our egg hunt um for the lucky duck this week. Um, we do have a lot of new programs. We just spent um about a thousand dollars on the materials we need to do some of the new programming, the new paint classes. As well as everything for the summer, so very excited to see summer, um spring coming, getting ready. Um, we've been adding a lot of new programs, we have a lot of things scheduled, so we're very excited to be sharing that. One of the things we've been talking about doing um is what we call experiences. And within the next month or two, we will start having passes that people can check out. Um, one way that we're cooperating a lot more with the city, uh we're looking at passes for a family that needs a pass to go to the pool. So we'll be buying passes, which of course is good for the city as well. Um, but we're also going to be purchasing another pool party, last year's was a great success. So those are just some ways um that we're working together and it's going really well, been really well received. Um, the little lucky duck, if you see me out um with plastic eggs, um hiding them, the children get to come and get a prize or win the big prize. Um, and we have two of those this week. It's a kickoff um for us for National Library Week and that goes on all this week. And honestly, this is one of my more well-celebrated National Library Weeks. Um, as our bills that have been up on the Hill in Des Moines, um both went away. So we get a little peace, um we get to do a little celebrating, um and keep doing what we're doing, so. This last year, honestly, it's been about the first time that I've ever started getting a little more vocal with the Hill. Um, letting them know a little bit about how we feel and uh kind of for them to understand what we even do and why, so. But thank you for all you do, what long nights you put in, um wow, so.
How's the tool room program doing?
How's the tool?
Tool checkout program.
Um, it's going well, um it's going well, we have different people coming in, we're adding new things. Uh, we do a program with the state, which was on the um, you know, debate at the Hill, whether we would keep getting some other funding from the state for in Rich Iowa. But we want to be adding all kinds of other new pieces of equipment. We've had recommendations that people um would like us to to purchase, so those will be coming in. Um, so we're kind of excited about that. And um we're again in our experiences, in our experience service, we're planning on doing um like a treasure chest type of kit that a family could take um and go treasure hunting using like the metal detector. You know, checking for the nails from the roof, either way you go. Um, but then also, we're thinking about doing backpacks where they can take binoculars and a map, go to the lake, um just different places they can go, places they can visit, so. In the words of go visit Red Oak and have fun or go in the area and have fun, we're trying to work on that.
So the program is successful here?
Yes, it's going well, yes, it's going well. And um there's several items that get checked out that I would like to check out, but I'm waiting.
What kind of items are checked out?
Um, we've had a lot of movement like on the radon detectors. I mean, I think a lot of people are checking for that. Um, we've had, you know, just different random, you know, tools and pieces. Um, one thing about the tool program though, it'll be better now to spend a little more time with it because a lot of the items are when people are starting to do the projects they're doing now, so.
Yeah, you don't have a lot to do about it.
We didn't, we didn't go with checking out the power tools.
We did talk about, we need to figure out what we're going to do with them.
Yes, we do, we do. I mean, it's not that they don't have a purpose or they can't do the things they were intended to do.
Liability issue.
It, yeah, we must do that on the liability, so. Um, and a lot of libraries don't, you know, I searched, so it just needs to be where, what's the best plan?
Do you have an age group that you would only check out?
At this point, it's eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yeah, otherwise, you know, I mean, if a parent wants, they can come and get the things they need, so.
Brian's going to present the uh our housing initiatives on Wednesday at the Housing Symposium. And since we're talking rural readiness, housing assessment.
Yep.
That was our project that we funded with those funds, so.
Yes.
I'm sure that's on my board.
And it is on your presentation.
Um, I think they're all like, I think they're like two weeks, but they bring it back as soon as they're done.
Excellent.
Thanks for your hard work.
Thanks Kathy.
Thank you.
Very appreciative.
All right, Lisa. See administrative report.
So again, uh doing interviews for the nuisance position. Um, I had a significant amount of training, so just want to commend the city hall staff for mass chaos at city hall. Like it's super hard to try and stay updated. We did close for a day and a half, which was helpful, that we could just start the training and just having everybody there and not be distracted. Uh, people were fine, there was only a few payments in the drop box. It was a good time based on the bills hadn't actually come out yet. Um, also met with Georgiana today. Uh, we do have um a little bit of coverage that we have to make in the park department. And so a big thanks to the other department heads who have been helping with that. And then I worked with Georgiana today, we are going to try and do some upgrades, we're going to get an iPad at the pool. And met with a person that has some pretty inexpensive software, that'll be like pool pass software, so people can actually register online to get their family pool pass. You'll get checked in at the pool with like a swipe on the iPad. And then we'll also, um, we added a hotspot to the phone so that they'll also be able to take credit card payments as well. So trying to modernize the pool a little bit.
Excellent.
So Georgiana was super excited about that. We're also going to offer public swimming lessons this year, not just private ones. So she's working on probably be two one-week sessions to do that. So uh the park board approved all those fees, it'll be seventy-five dollars for a single. We went back to having a family pass for two hundred dollars with a family of five, twenty-five dollars extra if you have a lot of people in your family. An extra twenty-five if you have a caregiver. Yes, clearly you. Um, also you can add a caregiver to your pass for another twenty-five dollars. And then the day pass stayed five dollars if you're just doing it one time. Uh, but it'll be great, like it'll just be, you know, a lot easier. I have found that, you know, you have a lot of young people who use technology and use it well. And we're also going to look at having their schedule um as part of, it's called Sling, which is another app that all the kids then can sign up for their scheduling.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
We have it in Kaskay, it works really well.
Yeah, it does.
It's like, hey, you have to work, don't forget.
She's a great, great tool, yeah.
Do we, do we, uh, have we had summer help apply?
So we have absolutely, uh assuming that everybody's willing to come, that applied, we will have a full slate of people to work for Georgiana at the pool.
There we go, well, well done.
And um we, uh, I just gave Brad about five applications for people in park maintenance or cemetery, so that kind of gets split between all the guys. Brad is taking the lead on that hiring process right now. Hopefully a few of them will work out. We did get um some of the regular guys that have come back every summer, some of the old, you know, regular age, not college kids. Um, and then we had our retiree come back. And I think the rest will probably be more college-age students, they have to be eighteen to do that work. So Brad will be contacting those five people. So I'm hoping that we can get a good slate of people on board, try to keep them happy and working and getting stuff done.
And all the pool helps been already hired?
Georgiana's in charge of that, she got all the applications. So I just said like, everybody needs to know they're hired, so they don't go elsewhere. And Suzie will be getting the paperwork ready for them, so they'll have about a two-week period from the end of April to May twelfth to get all their paperwork in for payroll. And then, of course, they will also be on the new system of submitting their time sheets. Uh, by then, we'll be there in the My Pay system through Civic and then uh they'll all have to sign up for stuff like that and so.
I, I have to say that Georgiana's done a great job, I think is manager, I mean, you couldn't ask for a better manager.
Turned it around, turned it around.
Oh, absolutely.
She absolutely turned it around. Everybody loves her.
Right, yeah.
So speaking of that, have we, I mean, is there anything you want to talk about with Adam?
Not here, no.
Correct.
That's.
We're handling it, the staff has been fabulous. Again, big kudos to Brad, who's taking the lead and then the other department heads. Basically, everybody has offered some employees, uh they kind of have once a week is the plan for the next month, like all hands on deck for a day and doing hard work, so. And then that's why I wanted to kind of handle the Georgiana side of things and I want her to know that we would like to invest a little bit of funds to help kind of modernize it and get us into the century of, you know, you can sign up online and swipe and keep track of how many people are there.
How much maintenance has been done for us to get open so far, and they have some?
Yeah, they have, uh, Chris had to contact the, there's a contractor that has to come in and slice the liner, take out the air, whatever's in there and then seal it back down. So we're getting on that slate and um utilities will probably be taking the lead on the water side of it, but they're getting a hose extension for the tractor truck to get all the last leaves out of there, so they don't get clogged into the pumps. And then everybody knows that basically water has to be in the pool by May first. We plan to open on the twenty-third and I said we are not opening late.
And I, and I know we just spent two and a half million dollars on that pool, but when we did that, we cut upgrading the bath houses in it for a later date, so we still have money to spend over there. We don't, nobody wants to hear it, but it needs an upgrade.
Previous council people would like to see that done too, so.
Yeah, the bath houses are in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, I think we really am, we probably have to Band-Aid through at least this summer.
Yep. But getting open early and staying open the full summer is a good idea. So that's good, awesome. Excellent. Anything else?
I feel like that's enough.
All right.
I do want to say Kathy, uh, she's still here, um Kathy has offered, Taylor was doing some of the website help for me. And so Hannah is super talented in like technology stuff over at the library and she can do that when she's on shift. So Kathy's offered Hannah services and Hannah's excited to have a little extra thing over there. And then she is also going to come over, uh Kathy's there all week doing her packet. So she also offered to have Hannah come over and help us spend some time getting this set-off program of eight hundred things ready to put in the portal for that set-off program for the building bills. So Kathy's always been super, um, super great about helping where she can.
Great. Um, for me, I'm just going to touch on, um, I had talked about the Safe Streets for All program that MAPPA and SWIPCO put together an application. Uh, it's a federal application, a federal program for planning. And they want it and it is going to impact Atlantic, Corinda, Glenwood, Harlan, Missouri Valley, Red Oak and Shenandoah. Um, basically, what we're going to be doing is working between the RPA eighteen, which is MAPPA, and RPA thirteen, which is SWIPCO. Um, we're going to be working collaboratively to come up with setting some goals. So we're going to be doing a goal-setting workshop, then we're going to do a formal resolution of which the city would be committed. Then we're gonna do a formal resolution of which the city would be committing to the agreed-upon safety goals. The adoption of the final plan, and then uh optional participation. In a safety and technical advisory commit, a group called a STAG. Um anyway, I'm excited about that. This is something that.
And this is for safe house to school.
This is for improving the safety of our streets, our sidewalks, and pedestrian crosses in our community, and. It's gonna be, it's something that we wouldn't normally get. It's one advantage of having worked with MAPPA. On a larger scale to do this type of, it's a federal program, yeah. So um it'll be fun working with my former colleagues again, and doing some stuff that we would normally do in the Omaha area. Excited about it. So if any of you are interested in being involved, I'm sure when we have some group work, I will need some volunteers, so. That's pretty much all I have. I was supposed to be a speaker at this Housing Symposium on Wednesday to talk about. Um just the housing initiatives that we have going and things, and my children. Are treating me, so I'm not able to go, so I asked Brian to speak on our behalf, being a part of. The rural readiness assessment and the comp plan and the downtown assessment and all of that. Um and being a part of so many of the conversations, as was Tim.
And he was just getting back, so.
That's all I have. Uh council. Who wants to start?
I'll start. I did nothing.
You did.
Moving on.
You helped with some kids.
And Adam worked, used to work at a greenhouse, and so he came in on my his council meeting the other day, and we're talking about plants to plant in, something that we're working on. And you just like helped us put that together. That was awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, John. Yeah, uh, Tim.
The egg appreciation dinner, and the exec meeting and board meeting for MCDC, and then see special tax.
God, I did have to come.
County supervisors meeting via Zoom.
And Sharon.
No, the egg appreciation dinner and Questers Hotel Motel applications, uh board. Ambassadors and our public tax hearing that we all went to.
Busy.
All right, anything for the upcoming agenda that we need to think about?
Nope, I feel like I always come up with honey, no worries.
Well, there is something, it's gonna be on there next time, but we'll talk about it then.
But that's. Have the budget hearing.
We we have the budget hearing next week, you know what I mean? That's all we have, so with that.